Good morning. The council members are still coming in. We have seven or eight members here presently, but we do have some very, very special presentations today. And so while the council members are still coming in, I would like to recognize, to begin our presentations, Councilmember Jack Weiss.
If you're a Notre Dame soccer player, will you please come on up? Come on up, everybody. Thank you, thank you for that applause. As they come up here, I'm going to give you all a chance to applaud again. I'd like you to join me in welcoming from my district, the CIF champion Notre Dame Academy girls soccer team. Congratulations, guys. Make some room. Come on, let them in, let them in. Just a few weeks ago, some of these outstanding athletes behind me played an 80-minute match against Oaks Christian from Thousand Oaks, and I'm told that the game ended in a scoreless tie. Is that right? And you can just imagine how hard the girls on both sides were just pouring their hearts out that night to try to win the championship. And to have that game end in a scoreless tie is just a testament to all of them, to the incredible skill and heart and dedication and talent of all of these girls. And so CIF Division 5 decided to name both of those schools as co-champions of the year, which is a very classy decision, and I am extremely proud of them. I know all of you are as well. In a minute, we're going to hear from Principal Sister Marie Paul from the school to tell us a little bit about the kids, their program, and about the school. I would like to have the honor, though, of reading you the names and butchering as few of them as possible, but I do apologize in advance of the members of the championship team. Boy, and Emily, you're the first name. Emily Otteniano, come on. Sarah Holdridge, Gabby Fuentes, Miranda Moriarty, Lauren Warner, a co-captain, Elizabeth Delatorre, Tiffany Warner, Katie King, Kendall Doherty, another co-captain, Lisa Arias, Caitlin Pashepni, Melissa Rosadini, Vanessa Reyes, Sidney Mayo, another co-captain, Carly Ryan, Lily Mancini, Marissa Watson, Kim Harding, Melissa Rodriguez, and Kelsey Kanata. We're so proud of you guys. Congratulations. Let's hear from your Principal Sister Marie Paul to tell us a little more about you.
Notre Dame Academy was begun in 1949, and we have a history of wonderful young women who have excelled not only in athletics, as these fine young women have, but also in academics and service and leadership. And for all of these things, we're very, very proud of them, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to share in this pride. Thank you.
I'd like also at this time to introduce Coach Mark Argood and his co-coach Max Argood. Would they come forward, please?
I'm just immensely proud of our team. They really put in a lot of effort in the season. It started on November 15th, and they worked four months very, very hard. And I'm just extremely proud of them. It's amazing year, and I'm proud to be their coach.
Well, congratulations to Notre Dame. I'm really proud that you're in my district, folks. When you get off the 10 freeway and you head down overland towards the west side of Los Angeles, you've probably passed by this school a million times. Next time you do it, I want you to think of these extraordinary girls behind me and of their amazing achievement this year. Congratulations again to the CIF champions.
Say something nice about our great Notre Dame Academy, and thank you, Jack, for bringing in the CIF champs. It's always good to have two of my favorite cousins went to Notre Dame Academy, sister. I don't know if you had Allegra Ahern or Nina Ahern. They were good girls, like all girls are from Notre Dame. But congratulations to the CIF champs. Good job, Coach.
We would just like to thank you very much for recognizing our school. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Come on, come on back. And Mr. President, I have another presentation. They're still getting organized, so we'll move to the back and maybe someone else can...
Okay. In the meantime, I will recognize Councilmember Miss Akowski, and we'll bring Mr. Weiss back for a second presentation after that. Miss Akowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to ask at this time, Mr. Jerry Greenwald to come forward. Members, along with Notre Dame and parents and students and wonderful people from the city of Los Angeles here today to receive recognition and tribute, we have this man standing beside me, who is and has been a longtime city employee, most recently the general manager of the Department of Animal Services. All of us, particularly those of us, and I look at Mr. Smith and Ms. Gruel, and I know Mr. Labange, who've been around City Hall for a very, very long time. You can't be around City Hall and not have known Jerry, have run into Jerry, and worked with Jerry on a number of important things involved in affecting the city of Los Angeles. This is one that I want to read a little bit, because Jerry has been in the news of late and has been in the news of late, I think very unfairly criticized, really embodying a department that's been criticized. And yet, when you hear what has been done, when you hear what Jerry has done at that department, it paints a very, very different picture. Jerry has had a long and distinguished career with the city of L.A., primarily known for extensive budgetary and managerial experience. And I think I got to work with Jerry very, very closely, right after I was elected in '97, on the help in creating the Marvin Brownie San Fernando Valley Constituent Services Center, because at that time Jerry was with the CAO and was part of the team that helped pull that together with an innovative idea, innovative creativity, and says, "We can make something happen in this city different from the way we've ever done it before." He has had a three-decade-long career in the city of Los Angeles. In fact, he has served as the zoo director and was then appointed to general manager of Department of Animal Services in 2002. And that one was surprising to me, because I didn't think he'd been there that long. It seems like it was just the other day that he got to Animal Services again. When and where he has been at the Department of Animal Services, while he was there, he helped initiate and help them create and launch its website, www.lanimalservices.com. He launched a spay and neuter clinic on the Spaymobile, this wonderful opportunity to have the spay and neuter capabilities brought out to communities, particularly communities who might not know about the ability to go to a veterinarian. The department has long sponsored coupons for redemption to help increase the number of animals that could be spayed and neutered in the city. He's established a customer service call called 1-884-LA-PET, and he's established an in-house licensing canvassing program. And members, the reason that one's important is because it really sends city employees under the auspices of Animal Services, door-to-door, to say to people, "We're your department. Do you have pets? Can we help you? Here's the way you can get them licensed. Here's the opportunity. Here's a coupon to get them helped, help get them spayed and neutered." And it has done a marvelous, marvelous effort in helping to reduce the number of stray and wild animals that we've had in the city. And many of us, particularly in years past, had received calls from constituents about packs of wild dogs and packs of stray animals roaming in certain areas of our city, making it difficult for kids to walk to school comfortably without the fear of these wild animals. And Animal Services has done so much through the years, and particularly under Mr. Greenwald's leadership, to really, really emphasize public education through this kind of outreach and highly, highly attended pet fairs, which are the most popular thing I think you've seen. If you go out to different community events and malls and see Animal Services there with its animals, the pets that are adopted, it's really increased tremendously the adoption rate in the city. Under his leadership, this department, for the first time in its history, in the history of the city of Los Angeles, decreased animal euthanasia rates by 50%. And increased animal adoption rates to 30%. I can go on. It increased animal sterilization rates by 29% to over 68,000 dogs and cats spayed or neutered, and significantly increased the number of dog licenses, microchips, animal permits, and enforcement notices issued. Those aren't the headlines that you've seen in the paper, but those are the real headlines. Those are the real facts, and I, for one, have known how difficult it has been for Mr. Greenwald to manage this department and not get the credit for what this department has done, what this department is doing today, and under that steady, stable, firm leadership, working very closely with his own employees. There were people who said, "Oh, we can do canvassing in the city of Los Angeles, but let's outsource it. Let's hire private firms." These city employees stepped up to the plate. Animal Services stepped up to the plate and said, "We can do it. Let's start it. Let's put employees out there going door-to-door, checking and see if there's animals there and checking to make sure that they're properly treated, they're licensed, and they have the opportunity to become spayed and neutered." So Jerry, it's with great sadness, actually, that I have you standing here, but it gives me great pleasure to be standing here and tell the real story, not the other story, and to say thank you, thank you for your incredibly heroic capabilities at that department, for what you've helped give them in the leadership, not only there but through your whole 30-year career, and wish you the greatest of congratulations and good wishes in your, I think, early retirement.
Thank you. Before we hear from Jerry, we have some other speakers, and I'd like my assistant here to recognize the next one.
Hi, my name's Emily. The next speaker is going to be Councilwoman Gruel.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good assistance. I too want to join Miss Akowski, and I know many of my colleagues in recognizing Jerry. We met about 20 years ago, when I started in the mayor's office and you were in the CAO's office, and Jerry was one who always was prepared, knew the answers, and was someone who's been tapped various times for numerous departments because of his knowledge and commitment and dedication and willingness to roll up his sleeves and some difficult issues. And I think, as Ms. Akowski mentioned, he's had a challenging experience in Animal Services, and I think done a tremendous job, Jerry, in responding. And when I first came into office, asked you to do a pet fair in my district, and I know it was kind of like, "Oh, you know, that's a lot of work," but you pulled it together. It was extraordinary, because as we know, in my southern tongue area, we have a lot of animals, not only dogs and cats, but others, and it was unbelievable. And I think you have committed, when we talked today, 30, over 30 years. That's a true dedicated city employee, and we don't always thank our employees as much as we should, and I'm glad that we're able to do that on the celebration of your retirement. But we hope that you will still keep in touch with us. Let us know.
Be their coach.
Thank you very much, Coach. Well, congratulations to Notre Dame. I'm really proud that you're in my district, folks. When you get off the 10 freeway and you head down Overland towards the west side of Los Angeles, you've probably passed by this school a million times. Next time you do it, I want you to think of these extraordinary girls behind me and of their amazing achievement this year. Congratulations again to the CIF champions.
Say something nice about our great Notre Dame Academy. And thank you, Jack, for bringing in the CIF champs. It's always good to... Two of my favorite cousins went to Notre Dame Academy, sister. I don't know if you had Allegra Ahern or Nina Ahern. They were good girls, like all girls are from Notre Dame. But congratulations to the CIF champs. Good job, Coach.
We would just like to thank you very much for recognizing our school. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Come on, come on back. And, Mr. President, I have another presentation. They're still getting organized, so we'll move to the back and maybe someone else can...
Okay. In the meantime, I will recognize Councilmember Ms. Sikowski, and we'll bring Mr. Weiss back for a second presentation after that. Ms. Sikowski.
I'm going to ask at this time Mr. Jerry Greenwald to come forward. Members, along with Notre Dame, and parents, and students, and wonderful people from the city of Los Angeles here today to receive recognition and tribute, we have this man standing beside me, who is and has been a longtime city employee, most recently the general manager of the Department of Animal Services. All of us, particularly those of us, and I look at Mr. Smith and Ms. Gruel, and I know Mr. Labange, who've been around City Hall for a very, very long time. You can't be around City Hall and not have known Jerry, have run into Jerry, and worked with Jerry on a number of important things involved in affecting the city of Los Angeles. This is one that I want to read a little bit because Jerry has been in the news of late, and has been in the news of late, I think, very unfairly criticized, really embodying a department that's been criticized. And yet, when you hear what has been done, when you hear what Jerry has done at that department, it paints a very, very different picture. Jerry has had a long and distinguished career with the city of L.A., primarily known for extensive budgetary and managerial experience. And I think I got to work with Jerry very, very closely, right after I was elected in '97, on the help in creating the Marvin Brownie San Fernando Valley Constituent Services Center, because at that time Jerry was with the CAO, and was part of the team that helped pull that together with an innovative idea, innovative creativity, and says, "We can make something happen in this city different from the way we've ever done it before." He has had a three-decade-long career in the city of Los Angeles. And in fact, he has served as the zoo director, and was then appointed to general manager of Department of Animal Services in 2002. And that one was surprising to me, because I didn't think he'd been there that long. It seems like it was just the other day that he got to Animal Services again. When and where he has been at the Department of General, the general manager of Animal Services, while he was there, he helped initiate and helped them create and launch its website, He launched a spay and neuter clinic on the Spaymobile, this wonderful opportunity to have the spay and neuter capabilities brought out to communities, particularly communities who might not know about the ability to go to a veterinarian. The department has long sponsored coupons for redemption to help increase the number of animals that could be spayed and neutered in the city. He's established a customer service call called 1-884-LA-PET, and he's established an in-house licensing canvassing program. And members, the reason that one's important is because it really sends city employees under the auspices of Animal Services, door-to-door, to say to people, "We're your department. Do you have pets? Can we help you? Here's the way you can get them licensed. Here's the opportunity. Here's a coupon to get them helped, help get them spayed and neutered." And it has done a marvelous, marvelous effort in helping to reduce the number of stray and wild animals that we've had in the city. And many of us, particularly in years past, had received calls from constituents about packs of wild dogs and packs of stray animals roaming in certain areas of our city, making it difficult for kids to walk to school comfortably without the fear of these wild animals. And Animal Services has done so much through the years, and particularly under Mr. Greenwald's leadership, to really, really emphasize public education through this kind of outreach and highly, highly-attended pet fairs, which are the most popular thing I think you've seen. If you go out to different community events and malls and see Animal Services there with its animals, the pets that are adopted, it's really increased tremendously the adoption rate in the city. Under his leadership, this department, for the first time in its history, in the history of the city of Los Angeles, decreased animal euthanasia rates by 50 percent. And increased animal adoption rates to 30 percent. I can go on. It increased animal sterilization rates by 29 percent to over 68,000 dogs and cats spayed or neutered, and significantly increased the number of dog licenses, microchips, animal permits, and enforcement notices issued. Those aren't the headlines that you've seen in the paper, but those are the real headlines. Those are the real facts. And I, for one, have known how difficult it has been for Mr. Greenwald to manage this department and not get the credit for what this department has done, what this department is doing today, and under that steady, stable, firm leadership, working very closely with his own employees. There were people who said, "Oh, we can do canvassing in the city of Los Angeles, but let's outsource it. Let's hire private firms." These city employees stepped up to the plate, Animal Services stepped up to the plate and said, "We can do it. Let's start it. Let's put employees out there going door-to-door, checking and see if there's animals there, and checking to make sure that they're properly treated, they're licensed, and they have the opportunity to become spayed and neutered." So Jerry, it's with great sadness, actually, that I have you standing here, but it gives me great pleasure to be standing here and tell the real story, not the other story. And to say thank you, thank you for your incredibly heroic capabilities at that department, for what you've helped give them in the leadership, not only there, but through your whole 30-year career, and wish you the greatest of congratulations and good wishes in your, I think, early retirement.
Thank you.
Before we hear from Jerry, we have some other speakers, and I'd like my assistant here to recognize the next one.
Hi, my name's Emily. The next speaker is going to be Councilwoman Gruel.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good assistance. I, too, want to join Ms. Sikowski, and I know many of my colleagues in recognizing Jerry. We met about 20 years ago, when I started in the mayor's office and you were in the CAO's office. And Jerry was one who always was prepared, knew the answers, and was someone who's been tapped various times for numerous departments because of his knowledge and commitment and dedication and willingness to roll up his sleeves in some difficult issues. And I think, as Ms. Sikowski mentioned, he's had a challenging experience in Animal Services, and I think done a tremendous job, Jerry, in responding. And when I first came into office, asked you to do a pet fair in my district, and I know it was kind of like, "Oh, you know, that's a lot of work." But you pulled it together. It was extraordinary, because, as we know, in my Sullen Tongue area, we have a lot of animals, not only dogs and cats, but others. And it was unbelievable. And I think you have committed, when we talked today, 30, over 30 years. That's a true dedicated city employee. And we don't always thank our employees as much as we should, and I'm glad that we're able to do that on the celebration of your retirement. But we hope that you will still keep in touch with us. Let us know how we can do things better, because that's been your whole career of trying to make the city a better place. So congratulations. I feel honored to have worked with you, and just so sorry that you're leaving early in my career here, but look forward to your retirement and seeing you often around these halls. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel.
Hi, my name is Desiree Romero, and Mr. Zion is next.
Mr. Zion is next.
Thank you, Madam, almost president someday, in the future. Gruel power, there we go. Jerry, I know that it's been, shall we say, tumultuous last few months, and retirement comes to all of us at a certain time in our life. And I know how it was when I retired from one career, went into the next career. But I wish you well, I wish your family well. You've done well in that. I know we had a meeting just recently, trying to sort out some of the issues to help resolve some of the problems that we're having in that arena with the animals, and to try and have the cohabitation between animals and people, so it becomes a peaceful, more peaceful environment. But I wish you well, I wish your family well in the future. And no general manager should have to go through the trials and tribulations that you had to experience. And to those that were personally attacking you and your family, there's one place for them, and that's behind the Gray Bar Hotel at Parker Center in the jail. Thank you, and good luck to you, Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. Zion. Our next speaker is Mr. Labange.
President, I like Emily or Desiree to introduce me. If you want to keep that job up there, you got to get them up there. Thank you, Emily. And from Allegiant Heights? Good to see you. And they have Room Eight, is that right? The cat? There's all of us to mention, there's a cat called Room Eight that historically lived at Allegiant Heights Elementary School. So here we have these beautiful students from Allegiant Heights, and here we're honoring a great cat. And Jerry, I want to thank you, because not only do you work that you did in the CAO's office, but your work at the zoo, your work throughout the city family. You were a great asset. And to your family, I congratulate you, and as others have mentioned, some of the challenges that were there, but now you're here, and now you go on, and you enjoy this, and know that you've served this city well and the people well, and made a difference in every place that you were, Jerry. So I just want to personally thank you, and I wish you a lot of great success in your retirement. Thank you, Jerry.
And also, before we hear from Jerry, I just wanted to thank you as well, Jerry, for your leadership, for helping in so many ways. I know that in my communities in Echo Park and in Silver Lake, it was remarkable to see the Spaymobiles come out, to really have a lot of people who are asked to do so much with so little sometimes. But thank you for your leadership and your help. So congratulations, and look forward to keeping in touch. And with that...
And, Mr. President, we'll give Jerry the microphone, but I would hope that he will both introduce his family members, as well as ask everyone here... I see a large number of people in a couple of rows here, who are here to help us celebrate his great career. So I'd like to ask everyone here with Jerry to please stand and say hello.
And we actually have two public speaker cards, too, that would like to say some nice things about Jerry as well. So we'll give you the last word, Jerry, so I'm going to invite them in. Dr. Dina, sorry, Marguamede, and Phyllis Doherty. Excuse me, doctor.
That's okay. Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. I just have a couple words to say. I'm here today to wish Jerry well, and to let him know what a wonderful experience I had, working with him as the L.A. Animal Services Chief Veterinarian for four years. Jerry is the type of person that hires you to do your job, he expects you to do it, and works with you as a team member to achieve goals. He treated each employee as an individual, and encouraged them to concentrate on their interests and areas of expertise, whether it was being a wildlife specialist, working to stop illegal dog fighting, or managing off-site adoption programs. Animal sheltering, and specifically animal control, is one of the most difficult, heart-wrenching, and misunderstood fields of work that anyone could choose. But Jerry took it on not only once, but twice. Some of you who didn't have the opportunity to work with Jerry, or didn't take the time to learn about not just the Department of Animal Control, but the people, the individuals who do the hard work and have the courage to make difficult decisions. For those of you, many special animal rights folks who relied on information from the misinformed, I offer you the following words from William Penn: "Help us not to despise or oppose that which we do not understand." We've all missed an important opportunity to alter the national perception that animal rights organizations are unwilling to work with shelters and their directors, despite the fact that Jerry, of all people, is an example of a leader willing to work with everyone. But today, in this city, it will not be so. We must respect one another, think progressively, and be willing to compromise before the true process of helping animals can begin. But today, in this great city, that has looked upon for guidance and leadership throughout the country, it will not be so. I am proud of what Jerry has accomplished, lowering euthanasia rates to the numbers we just heard, and increasing adoptions, and leading the department in his own way. I leave you and Jerry with words from a very well-respected, charismatic woman, Eleanor Roosevelt. When you have decided what you believe, what you feel must be done, have the courage to stand alone and be counted. Jerry, thank you for your courage, and you have been counted.
I'm Phyllis Doherty of Animal Issues Movement, and I have known Jerry for as long as anyone in this room, maybe longer. We worked in the CAO's office when we were probably both teenagers, just about. Of course, Jerry was older than I. Ron Deaton was there. We all started out together. I think probably Councilwoman Parks is the only one right now that also was with us at that time. It's been a pleasure to work with Jerry and to know him during these years. There are a couple of things that he's done that didn't get mentioned, I'm going to mention very briefly. Jerry also increased the protection for guard dogs, something that's long been needed, one of the first cities to do that. He got signs on the back of our vans that we've needed for 20 years, telling people to spay and neuter. And he created wildlife officers to go out and talk with people. These are some of the things he was criticized for. He did lower the euthanasia rate both times he worked for the department. I want you to know that the people that have attacked him, have attacked him all the way from Atlanta, Georgia, people that know nothing about the department, and people that know nothing about animal control. Jerry's done a wonderful, wonderful job. It's so sad that we're losing him, and I hope he will come back and offer us some guidance and counsel.
Well, this is quite a switch. Usually, I'm sitting there, waiting for the barbs to be thrown at me, and hoping I had the right answers. This morning, on the way, I'll say for the last time, on the way to work, I thought about what I would say today, and I think clearly the best thing I can say, and the most truthful thing I can say, is I've been blessed being part of the city of Los Angeles family. Mike Carey and I were talking earlier about the fact that it's been a tough job, both in the Department of Animal Services, in the city administrative office, and even at the zoo, believe it or not. But it's always been fun, and we've always accomplished a lot, and we were pleased and proud with what we've done, whether we got kudos or not. I see one of the first people I met here in the city, just walked in, Ron Deaton. He reminded me of my first telephone number the other day, and I was aghast that he remembered it. I've worked for four mayors and four CAOs, and I tried to count up how many council people that I've worked for, and I ran out of time. So I'll do that in the next week, and I'll report back. I want to thank all of you, and as was said earlier, what makes it fun, really, is to the people with whom you work for your whole career. And I have to say, these folks here, and others who are still in the shelters, working hard today to take care of the public, they are the real heroes. And I would just ask that, don't forget that the employees of the city make it run, and don't forget them. And I won't forget you, and... And thank you all very much. And I want to especially, first of all, I better introduce my two attorneys. I don't go anywhere without my two attorneys. My wife, Karen. Stand up. And my daughter, Alyssa. Each day, on the way to work, I checked with them whether I could say what I was going to say that day, or whether I could pass on whatever information I had, I was going to pass on. I always felt I was legal, anyway. But thank you both. It's been a great ride. And thank you.
Thank you very much, Jerry. Thank you, Ms. Sikowski, and our next presentation will be given by Mr. Jack Weiss.
Folks from the Million Mom March, please come on up. Colleagues, I'm joined here by some moms, some activists, some from my district, some from your districts, people you really, if you don't know them already, you really need to get to know them, because these are some of the leaders in Los Angeles of an organization called the Million Mom March. And I know you've all heard of it. The Million Mom March was founded on Mother's Day in 2000, when more than three-quarters of a million people gathered together on the mall in Washington, D.C. Tens of thousands of others marched in towns throughout the country to demonstrate their support for sensible gun laws, the sort of things that we've always been leaders on here in Los Angeles, the sort of things that we've always catalyzed here in Los Angeles, and the sort of things we need to keep doing. Recently, the organization, Million Mom March, merged with the Brady Campaign, which many of you know by its former name of Handgun Control. And so the Brady Campaign, the Brady Center, and the Million Mom March together are the nation's largest national, nonpartisan grassroots organization, leading the fight to prevent gun violence. What we're here today to make all of you aware of is that on May 9th this year, 2004, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., there will once again be a Million Mom March on the mall, or I guess this one will be at the Capitol in Washington, D.C. And hopefully, we will have the opportunity here in Los Angeles, for those of us who aren't able to go to Washington on that day, to make clear our support for changing not just our nation's laws, but for changing the culture in this society, which has made guns so prevalent and so acceptable, when in fact, we should be trying to achieve a nation, a civilization, where just the opposite is the case. I also want you to know, and I want my friends from Million Mom March to know, that today, with I believe Mr. Ludlow's support, I'm going to be introducing a resolution today in support of Senator Jack Scott's bill up in Sacramento, which would permit and encourage gun violence prevention to be taught in secondary schools, along with health education, a very important thing. We ought to be doing so much more to arm our kids with knowledge, and guts, and courage, and sensibility in a society which has basically run amok and done so much to arm them in all the wrong ways. And I look forward to having all of you support us and support Senator Scott in those efforts. I'd like to name some of the folks who are here with me, and then we're going to hear from one of them. I'm joined by Kay Holman, the co-president of the Million Mom March Valley Chapter, Suzanne Verge, representing the West Side Chapter, Margaret Verge, Laney Chow, Riley Peak, Bobby Peiser, and Asia Gibson. And I'd like to ask Kay to come forward, and... Kay is forward, and tell us a little bit about what you're doing today, and also, please introduce the children that you've brought with you. Folks, please welcome Kay Holman.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much, on behalf of both the San Fernando Valley and the West Los Angeles Chapters of the Million Mom March. We have come together today as mothers, because as mothers, we have tried all our lives to teach our children to do right. We try to teach them to play fair, to be safe, to be honest, to share, and to grow up to be good citizens. And as you know, four years ago, we came to Washington, D.C. to try and tell Congress that they weren't being good citizens, they weren't necessarily doing what their mothers taught them, that guns are too easy for children to get hold of, that losing 12 children a day to gun violence in our country is not acceptable. Since then, we have continued working, and things have gotten better. At this time, eight children every day are victims of gun violence. Countless others are injured, adults commit suicide, there are accidental shootings because guns don't have the right safety locks, because it's too easy to get them, because our gun lobby is so strong, and has unfortunately made it too lucrative for some politicians to listen to their mothers and listen to the voice of their conscience. That isn't the case here in City Hall. Four years ago, the city council supported the Million Mom March. You were one of the first cities to come forward and endorse what we were doing, and we thanked you with all our hearts. Since then, the city council has done wonderful things. They've continued to be leaders in our country, both with your resolution endorsing the renewal of the assault weapon ban, which will be sunsetting in September of this year, if we do not act. About the time our kids are going back to school, you'll be finding AK-47s and Uzis out in the stores again, unless we act. And the city council has spoken and said, "That's not acceptable." The city council spoke when they said that the immunity bill, which would have given blanket immunity to gun manufacturers and distributors against prosecution for their negligence, when guns that aren't safe enough are injuring family members, when manufacturers allow guns to be sold on the black market with a wink of their eye, because after all, they're in the business to make money. And you said, "No, that was not acceptable," and you passed a resolution. And as a result of all of our efforts, that bill did not pass this year, and we are so grateful to you. We are grateful to each member of our city council who votes for their conscience, and we want to tell you as mothers that we are very sure that your mothers are very proud of you, as we are today. We'd like to give Jack Weiss one of our pins, and more than that, we would like to give each and every member of the city council an apple pie, as our moms' way of thanking you for your work. Thank you.
We also have one other council member who'd like to speak, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Garcetti. I want to thank Councilman Jack Weiss and your organization. Sometimes, at national level, even local level, we get caught up on Democrat, Republican, and all this other stuff. What you're saying is, we just want what every American deserves, and that is a safe environment, regardless of politics, whether you're pro-guns or anti-guns. The fact is, we need safer streets, and this issue of what's happening to our young people and our children are very real. And to have you there, representing that statement, says so much. And I just hope, as this continues to grow, the whole diversity of our city is able to say the same message in many different languages, because it affects so many different people, especially in a metropolis like Los Angeles. I want to thank you for your hard work, and the fact that you're making a statement without politicizing it. We're just talking about, "Let's make our environment safe, our children." Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes, I'd also like to recognize Mr. Labange to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmember Weiss, and thank all the moms, all the moms who are here, and I see a dad in the back. But thank all the moms and all the children to bring the attention, which is so important about violence and the violence of guns, and how easy it is to really not only destroy the life of someone who's here on this beautiful earth, but to destroy the life of hundreds around that particular person and families, and the violence which is perpetrated. I just say, I love apple pie. I just say, I love apple pie, you know? And I also say, if I ever would, if I ever would get a tattoo, I'd put one right here for my mom, because if it wasn't for moms, we wouldn't be here. God bless all of you. Thank you.
Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Tom. I don't want my son to have one either, but I hope he puts "mom" on mine as well. I just wanted to stand as well and congratulate all of you. It's a wonderful organization that has spoken up for children and for their future. And as a recent mom of a nine-month-old, there's nothing like that feeling of the helplessness of potentially your child in a situation where guns aren't involved. And that, I remember, and it may have even been a document that you all prepared, as I spoke to your group, was about parents asking other parents whether there's a gun in the home of the individual where your child is playing. And you just, you don't think that that's necessary, but in fact, it is necessary in these days and times. And I have tried to educate so many of my friends to say, "Ask the parents if they have a gun in the home." And I think was the figure, about 40% actually have guns in their homes. And as, playdates, as I'm learning, is the new thing, kids are going to other people's homes, and you don't know the answer to that question. And so, you have provided a tremendous voice for our children and for this country, and I just want to say, thank you, and thank you to Jack for acknowledging you today, and look forward to working with you as a new mom, to support your efforts. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Weiss, for doing this. I was very proud to be a part of the march and to join you, and I'm really pleased to see you guys all here. Know that you have a home of 15 people who are supportive of what you're doing. I've worked very closely with PACS USA, which was also formed by a friend of mine. We're trying to work to make sure that the schools here, perhaps in some of the settlements that are going to be coming down with some of the gun manufacturers, that we get a real education system in LAUSD, and also give the opportunity for kids to speak up, because we know that in so many of the shootings that happened at schools, the Secret Service shows about nine out of 10 times, somebody had said something before, but they hadn't told the right people. And if we can get that system here in Los Angeles, where young people are empowered themselves to do something about this issue, when they hear about potential violence, because they, you, all you young people are really that front line. You hear from your peers that somebody might be playing with a gun, or that somebody is threatening your classmates, you can help protect yourselves and your schools. So, thank you, Mr. Weiss, and thank you so much to the Million Mom March for all you're doing in this country.
Mr. Weiss.
I also wanted to mention that although we don't have all the details for you yet, we were hoping to have it today for announcement, there will be a local event. I'm sure you know that four years ago, there were two marches right here in Los Angeles, one in Alvera Street and one at the Federal Building. And the Violence Prevention Coalition is putting together an event here in Los Angeles in connection with the 77th Precinct, which you may be aware has unfortunately notoriety of being about the worst neighborhood for gun violence. So, there will be an event in Los Angeles. If you can't make it to Washington, DC, you can show your support there. And I also wanted to thank Ms. Grul, because as she mentioned, our Ask program is something that we are going from school to school, meeting with students and PTAs, and teaching them about the, to ask, "Asking Saves Kids: Is There a Gun in Your Home?" If any of you would like more information about that, we'd be happy to come to your neighborhoods, and come to your schools, and share that with you. I wanted to, at this time, be able to give you all your pies, but I wanted to recognize our givers. We have some students from Monroe High School, and we also have some of our own children. This is Connor Raskin.
And Riley Pete.
Riley Pete. Nate, I'm going blank. Powers, Nate Powers, forgive me. Emily Holman. And Carly Mayer. And again, the students from Monroe High School from their government class. And if you'd like to, at this time, we'd like to give you your pies.
We'll have pie distribution. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very, very much, Mr. Weiss, and the Million Mom March. And next, we will be recognizing Councilmember Grul. So, you can go ahead and distribute the pies to the council members. Mr. Clerk, while we're waiting for this, why don't you call the roll?
Cardness Garcetti, Grul Hahn, Labange Ludlow, Misakowski Parks, Perry Reyes Smith, Villagosa Weiss, Zain Padilla, 10 members present and a quorum, Madam President.
All right, that is approved. Do you want to go through the, some of the preliminary business? Minutes?
Approval of the minutes?
Mr. Reyes moves. Mr. Parks seconds. The minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those are approved as well.
Since there's a quorum, do you wish to take public comments at this time?
No, we'll wait for the continuation of the presentations as soon as the floor clears.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there's been a request by the City Attorney's Office to continue the closed session item on the continuation agenda to Tuesday, April 6.
Is there any objection, members, to continuing the closed session item till April 6? If not, that will be the order.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 4 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Members, are there any requests for special, items 1 through 4? Members, items 1 through 4 are before us, to see if we want to call anything special. If not, we will have those before us, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved.
Items 5 through 19 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and demanding motion 18A has been distributed to all members.
All right, we do have a card on item 11, so we will call that special. Mr. Garcetti?
It'd be fine to hear the card, but can we continue that one week as well?
All right, we will, that will be the recommendation after we hear the card on item 11. Any other specials, members?
19 as well.
Item 19 called special by Mr. Garcetti. If there are no other specials, those matters are before us, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. All right, let us return, at this time, to the presentations and recognize Councilmember Grul.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm so pleased to be here today, to have the pleasure of recognizing Kestner Avenue School in my district in Van Nuys for being honored with the Bravo Award, presented by the Los Angeles County Music Center. Each year, the Bravo Award is presented to a school, an arts educator, and a general classroom teacher for incorporating the arts into the curriculum. This year, Kestner not only won the Bravo Award, but also won $10,000 from the Robinsons May Department Stores. Kestner's principal, Sandy Barrett, and vice principal Nancy Valens, are here to accept this award of congratulations from the City of Los Angeles, on behalf of Kestner's staff and 1,000 students. I'd like to, if we could now, to, we have a couple of pictures we'd like to show of the kids participating in the arts programs at Kestner Avenue School. I think that will be coming momentarily. There we go. You can see on the screen. We wanted to demonstrate some of the real positive environment that arts programs have created at Kestner Avenue School. Many of you know that I have been visiting every school in my district and talking to principals, and I can tell right away, when talking to that principal, whether that school is a successful school, or one that is, looks outside the box. And I have to tell you, when I went to Kestner, this principal was active and interested, and what could we do together, and had a whole list of to-dos for me, actually, that we are working on, to have that strong partnership between the two. So, thank you so much for the photographs. I appreciate that. Kestner Avenue has brought really pride to my second district by bringing music, drama, and visual arts to their students to develop their creativity, expand their minds, and formulate an appreciation for the arts. And I always remember, when I was at DreamWorks, we talked a lot about the fact that we were having to recruit animators from other countries, because our school system did not value the arts. And we didn't, you know, encourage young people from a very early age to be participating in the arts, and it's opportunity for them and their careers. What is, I think, unique about this particular program in Kestner is that they didn't have any additional funding. Principal Barrett maintains that it doesn't take a lot of money to promote the arts in education, it just takes an administration, a faculty, and a community that recognizes that academic performance and worthiness prioritizes their development. And in light of the budget crisis that we're facing in so many levels of government, it's refreshing to hear school administrators speak about a positive attitude and act with resolve to continue to bring education to students, and even incorporate arts into their curriculum. The performing arts, for all of us, we know, transcends all languages, cultures, and social borders. The arts are a unique way for our children to communicate and learn. We all know of the African proverb, that it takes a village to raise a child. And I know that Kestner is in good hands, because they have a village of a principal, parents, teachers, and a community, staff, and administrators, who work together to bring their child's, their children's, character, integrity, intelligence, talent, and potential. The network of relationships they have developed is really unbelievable. I also want to mention, for my colleague, Councilmember Villagosa, that Multima Elementary School at El Serino tied for their Bravo Award, and also received that $10,000 gift from Robinsons May. So, I want to congratulate Principal Barrett, Vice Principal Valens, and the students and faculty at Kestner Avenue School for their extraordinary achievement in the Bravo Award. And I'm here to present a wonderful proclamation to them, on behalf of all of us here at the City Council, thanking you for your efforts in achieving this wonderful accomplishment and being honored for the Bravo Award. Let's give them a great round of applause.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Wendy Grul for her support. She did come out, and I did give her a to-do list, and she's actually accomplished a couple of them already, and I want to thank her for that. Mrs. Valens and I love being at Kestner, and I accept this on behalf of the students, parents, and staff. We don't do it alone, we're a team. We strive to be good members of the community, and our students are well-educated when they leave our school, and they're good citizens. And that's all we can really ask about our schools. And I want to thank you, and I'm looking forward to coming back to school in a few minutes and showing this to the staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. First. Yeah. If you stay, we'll take a picture of the back. Can you stay a few minutes? Thank you, Madam Chair. I have one other presentation, and I'd like to ask Ms. Bonnie Baylor to come up from Northridge Hospital, and the Children's Assault Treatment Services Program, to accept this resolution. Colleagues, today, we are, the City of Los Angeles is declaring April Child Abuse Awareness Month. Approximately 3 million children are reported, abused, and neglected in this country each year. 3 million. The number is probably conservative, considering not all cases are reported, and until something tragic happens, and it's too late. Child abuse is unfortunately a common problem, and finding solutions depends on a level of involvement among people and organizations throughout our community. The effects of child abuse are not only felt by the individual families, but entire communities. In this time of uncertainty and stress, the ability to cope with the needs of a child sometimes can be overwhelming. And as I mentioned earlier, and frequently do talk about my new child, and being elected official, and having that, and the stress sometimes is unbelievable. When you wake up at 5:00 in the morning, you go to all night, and the child wakes up in the middle of the night, that stress sometimes can be overwhelming for parents. And we need to let them know that there are places they can go, and people they can call to receive help. Now, more than ever, I think we, as a community, need to intervene and take the steps necessary to protect those children. Effective child abuse programs can succeed prevention programs because of partnerships created among those social service agencies, schools, religious, and civic organizations, law enforcement, and the business community. We need to know that each of our families is able to provide them with a loving and nurtured environment. Children are miracles, who should be loved, nurtured, and cared for. There is nothing a child can do, nothing they can do, that deserves abuse. If you are a parent, as I mentioned, and having problems staying in control to control your anger, join a support group, talk with other parents, or call a helpline in your area. And also, if you have a reason to believe that someone is abusing their child, report it. Help save a life. And lastly, if a child you know tells you that they are being abused, believe them. I am proud to stand here today to acknowledge that this is Child Abuse Awareness Month, and to be able to introduce Ms. Bonnie Baylor, who is, as I mentioned, the director of the Children's Assault Treatment Center in Northridge Hospital, and let her tell you a little bit about their efforts, but to remind not only the people who are sitting in the chambers today, but those of you that are listening or watching on TV, that this is an issue that is affecting, as I mentioned, over 3 million children, and we need to do something to stop that cycle of abuse. So, I'm pleased to present this proclamation, and to ask upon if you would say a few words. Okay? Thank you. Go ahead, Nicole. Oh, you want to do that now? Can I take it real quick? Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. On behalf of Northridge Hospital Medical Center Sherman Way and the Children's Assault Treatment Services Program, I'd like to thank you for recognizing the importance of child abuse prevention. The Children's Assault Treatment Services Program is the only program in the San Fernando Valley that provides medical evidentiary exams, case management, and counseling to victims of physical and sexual abuse. We see over 750 victims every year. We work closely with law enforcement, the Department of Children and Family Services, and the District Attorney's Office. Of the 750 victims that we treat each year, almost 200 of them are children under the age of six years old who have been sexually abused. And yet, it is estimated that only one in every 10 reports are made. This is a seriously, seriously under-reported crime. The Children's Assault Treatment Services Program also provides workshops throughout the community on the importance of recognizing the signs of abuse, and on making the report. We focus mainly on working with mandated child abuse reporters, who are people who professionally work with children. During the month of April, we have a poster that we are distributing throughout the community that says, "Because children should be loved and protected and encouraged, but not hurt, stop child abuse." And it says, "April is Child Abuse Prevention Month," but we crossed out "April" to say "every month is Child Abuse Prevention Month." So, please, help us in our efforts to protect children. Reporting is important, because it not only brings help to families in crisis and victims, but it also... I lost my train. Okay. It not only brings help to victims, but it also helps prevent further harm. Thank you again, and I'd like to distribute several of these posters to each one of your districts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Grul. Next, let me recognize Councilmember Eric Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and good morning, colleagues and members of the public. Some of the helpers that you saw up on the stage there, next to the President's chair, come from Elysian Heights Elementary School. And Sally Olgin, who's our wonderful principal, I live two blocks away from this school, has brought representatives, parents, teachers, from Elysian Heights Elementary School here to City Council today. So, I hope you all welcome them with a round of applause first, and then I'll tell you why. Welcome to City Hall. We honor many elementary schools, primary schools, here in council chambers, and we always have an open chamber for anybody who wants to come by and visit. But I'm especially proud of my local elementary school, the one around the block from where I live, which for the second year in a row, won the 2004, which was a repeat after 2003, National Title I Distinguished Schools Recognition Award, for achieving the highest academic improvement rate of all Title I schools in California. This is unprecedented. This is the number-one improvement school in California, two years running. You all here today, colleagues, are responsible for this, because a couple of years ago, when we were looking at expanding LA's best schools, and we got the call, we were able to bring LA's best to Elysian Heights Elementary, which combined with an incredibly dedicated staff, wonderful teachers, and parents who care deeply about their children's futures, have all led these kids here to exhibit the performance that they have. And we know that it's an incredibly beautiful school. If you've never gone to it, go straight up Echo Park Avenue, and when you see the cat on the wall... on the wall of the school, you're at the right place. It's a place that's loved by our community, it's a place that's embraced by our community. I don't have kids yet, but hopefully in a year soon from now, I'll have kids at Elysian Heights Elementary School. And I wanted to invite Sally forward to say something on behalf of the school. Maybe we'll have one of the kids say a quick word. And I want to present this certificate to all of you. Congratulations on all you have done.
I want to thank Councilman Garcetti, and I wanted to say that four years ago, we were an improvement school, which is not a very good thing to be. And now we are a Title I national distinguished school. And the students that I have here with me today are some of the best that we have at Elysian Heights, and I'm so very proud of all of them, the teachers and the parents. I want to thank them for all their hard work.
Jesse, does Jesse want to say something on behalf of the students? We have our student body president, Jesse Garcia. He said he wants to be a council member when he grows up.
Yeah, so, this is what's when I... I don't know what to say.
How do you feel?
Fine. Yeah. One of our schools was one of the most improved, and our cat sticks, and I'm glad of that.
All right. Thank you.
And thank you.
All right, Jesse. Thank you very much, Madam President. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Next, we will recognize Councilmember Labange, and then we will have one more presentation by Mr. Parks. Councilmember Labange is going to be joined by Ms. Gruehl. But I, Mr. Labange, I believe you'll be able to begin.
Ladies and gentlemen, as we wait Ms. Gruehl, I'm going to call Tom Meyer up here. Tom Meyer is a great city employee of 37 years. All right, Tom, good to see you. Some of his co-employees are standing behind me here, but Tom was born in the heartland in Chicago in 1941, on the 26th day after Christmas, 26th of December. He came out and went to Ambrose College in Davenport, Iowa. He attended the Arts Institute in Chicago, and he entered Long Beach State in 1963 and fell in love with printmaking, which is an artistic quality. He earned a Bachelor of Fine Arts at Long Beach State in 1967, and began his career in the graphics department of the Municipal Arts Department, July 1967. Before the summer of love, before Woodstock, before all those great things, during, but just today, as they recommissioned a council of the arts, which Mayor Haught has commissioned, and as we discuss our cultural affairs department, Tom started with our Municipal Arts Department some 37 years ago. He has brought his work of great quality to the department in creating the many publications that the department does to promote the cultural activities, the music events throughout the city of Los Angeles. He has also had very many curations of exhibits throughout the City Hall Tower, including the one that is most famous, the William Ray 100 Shots of City Hall on the Bridge, which was the first exhibit of any on our bridge gallery connecting City Hall and City Hall East. And it was so good. And Bill Ray was a great dear friend of Tom, as he was of mine, a great photographer of Los Angeles. But I want to salute Tom Meyer on his 37 years as a city employee for the creative work, and I want to salute all his coworkers from the Cultural Affairs Department, and present you this commendation for all the 37 years of service on this day, and ask that Glenn Dake, Glenn grabbed Tom's camera right here, the great deputy for Mr. Garcetti, who's very adaptive, and let's get Tom's shot here, everybody. Let's salute Tom Meyer on his 37 years of service with the city of Los Angeles. All right, there we go. Tom, you want to say something? I know. That's more fun. Tom, you want to say something? And introduce everybody. Tom, let me have that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. When I started, the Municipal Arts Department at that time was about 14 people, and we had the Bureau of Music, we had a gallery in Barnesdale Park, and we had the Cultural Heritage Board. And it's a shootout here. In that time, and then we grew slowly over the years. We took on Watts Towers in the 70s, in the 70s. In 1980, we became the Cultural Affairs Department after it was Joe Wachs's pushing to have that done. We kept growing all along, and now we're in kind of a crisis, and they're meeting across the hall here to try and remedy the situation. The arts are very important in this city, and I'm proud of my little help to keep moving along. We've affected so many lives of so many people over the years, and hopefully you council members will keep supporting cultural affairs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, thank you. Virginia Kazar from the department, please step forward, and Isabel Rosas from the commission for brief remarks about this 37-year great employee.
We couldn't have done it without him.
I like that speech. That's a Mulholland speech. Members, I thank you. Let's salute Tom Myers, 37 years. Thank you, buddy. We're going to take a picture. Lois, come on up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Labange. I know you have another one.
And where's Wendy?
I think Ms. Gruehl will be able to join you as well.
Here we go. We go from someone who was born and raised in Chicago to find someone who's born and raised in Utah, is that correct? Lois Saffron, please welcome Lois Saffron, Safian, excuse me, I know, but I always said Saffron, because I went to, I know, but I went to... Lois Saffrian, who is being honored today here, she, as I said, was born in Utah, but also raised much in Los Angeles, and went and graduated from Immaculate Heart, right in the neighborhood which she lives, in the Oaks area of Los Feliz, with a BA in American Studies. She also was a Coral Fellow, which is so important, in the city, on the City Focus Program. And she's had a tremendous impact really on the lives of many people, because she's been a very dynamic person, who engaged people to get involved with many, many different concepts and ideas. But why she's being honored today is because she was very special to us in our telecommunications area. And she also worked closely with Mayor Tom Bradley. And it's my pleasure to ask, as we flip this presentation for you, Lois, that Wendy Gruehl comes, a former deputy for the mayor, and add a few more words as we continue this great little talk about Lois Saffrian.
He wanted to do the kind of, are we the Starsky and Hutch of...
No, no.
Okay, right. Okay. I just wanted to also mention that Lois has an extended history and dedication with the League of Women Voters, and on not only women's issues and children's issues. And sometimes we're judged in our life based on our children and their successfulness. And you have two wonderful daughters that I've had the pleasure of working with professionally that you raised to be, I think, as active and as tenacious as you have been, Lois. And those of you that, I can't believe you wouldn't know her, but just in case you had never met Lois, those of you around this horseshoe, Lois is someone who speaks her mind and is an extraordinary advocate. And she, as part of this TV station, and I think even before I was elected, when I was running for office, she reminded me how important Channel 36 was, how important this issue was for public access. And for those of you that are watching today, without Lois's involvement, we would not be standing here today recognizing the accomplishments of Channel 36, and particularly of Lois. So she has served many mayors. I just had the pleasure of meeting her during my time in Mayor Bradley's office and want to, we have many whereas's here, Lois, that talk about all of your accomplishments. And Tom and I, we're not going to mention all of them, but wanted to be able to say you've been an extraordinary, I think, addition to the city family. We feel you're part of our family and your family as well. So congratulations. I'm very happy to be here and stand with my colleague, Tom Labange, in recognizing your many years of service. Thank you so much.
Wendy, thank you very much. Also, and I heard, tried to hear everything there, I know so many, but you talked about LA's Best and the work that you did on that, and also the League of Women Voters. And it's wonderful to see, as we recognize with Mr. Weiss's efforts there, the Million Mom March, and the League of Women Voters. It is truly an impact that people get involved and make a difference, and that inspires somebody else to make a difference. But you're being honored today, and this is a great resolution. But I'd like to call on Channel 36, Steve Grace, to say a few words.
Thank you very much, council members. I'm Steve Grace, President of the LA Cable Television Access Corporation. The main reason we're here today, or you are honoring Lois, is for her service as President and a board member of LA Cable Television Access, and as my mentor really at Channel 36. Lois has been there from the beginning, going back 15 years ago, the previous cable franchise contracts. She has served tirelessly as a member of the family of Channel 36, and really reflects the best of what public service is all about. Before there were neighborhood councils, before there were ways to be actively formally involved in the city, there were men and women like Lois giving their, giving of themselves their time, their talent to serve the city. So she has been a tremendous mentor for me, a great friend, and it is just a thrill for me that you've taken this opportunity to honor her. Thank you, Lois.
I appreciate that, Steve, very much, and I want to say that Bill Rosendahl, we thank you for coming down, Bill, for your work here. He was a former cable guy, a great guy, a great communicator, and it's good to see you, Bill. But Lois, we're going to ask you to take the microphone right now and stay up. Get your beautiful daughters right next to you. Look at this great pack of people behind you.
I know.
And Lois, but I got to do this because it's protocol. I forgot to recognize Ann Finn, the great wife and life partner, the great councilman, Howard Finn. Lois Saffrian.
Thank you for Thomas, the Lois Saffian Show. Thank you so very much, both Tom Labange and Wendy Gruehl, for giving me this honor. And I want to thank all my friends and colleagues who have come out today. I'm just overwhelmed, and I'm especially, I'm glad you called attention to my two daughters, Laurie and Samara, that I'm very, very proud of. Actually, that was my best accomplishment. And I want to thank the City Council for offering me this opportunity. I never miss an opportunity to take an opportunity to talk about what I care about, and as you've heard, I care very much about Channel 36. Many of you probably became acquainted with Channel 36 originally when you had an opportunity to express your views to voters during your election. Channel 36 offers more opportunities for debates and for interviews than any other television station in Los Angeles. And that is one of the reasons that the League of Women Voters has always been supportive of this channel. As you heard, I've been an advocate for public right to have a cable access channel for 20 years, as President of the League of Women Voters, as a telecommunications commissioner, and as a board member of Channel 36. As a matter of fact, Bill and I were reminiscing earlier about how we were down here at City Hall almost every day, I think, during the franchising process, you know, advocating for whatever it was that we wanted to see get into those franchises. And one of the things that got into the franchise was a mandate for access channels. When the city decided to increase the franchise fee from 3% to 5%, it did so with the understanding that that increase was going to go into a special fund that was supposed to, supposed to help cable viewers. One of those things was to develop or to establish a cable access channel through a nonprofit corporation, I'll back up, to establish a nonprofit corporation that would oversee programming, educational and community programming. And that was a mandate that was in the franchise fees. Channel 36 went into operation in 1997, and since that time has provided 24-hour service in programming. And these past two years, under the leadership of Steve Grace, who you heard, on an incredibly, actually ridiculously limited budget, it has grown into a valuable resource to the city of Los Angeles. And in fact, it is a potential financial resource to the city, because it has the potential of keeping cable subscribers from switching over to satellite services. And every time a cable subscriber switches to a satellite, the city loses money. If 36 did nothing more than to provide an opportunity for at-home adult education, it would be indispensable. Several hundred students are attending college classes for credit through Channel 36. These include people who might not otherwise, for various reasons, be able to get a college degree. I consider Channel 36 a window on the many diverse ethnic, cultural, and geographic areas in Los Angeles. Channel 36 can be the glue that binds these areas together with understanding and appreciation. After eight years on the Board of Directors, it's going to be difficult to no longer be actively involved with community cable access, but I am satisfied that we have really come a long way. 20 years ago, I had a vision of what I thought a channel like this might mean to Los Angeles, and I've seen that vision become a reality. I'm asking for the continued support of City Council. If I had some pies, I would give them to you, but you might consider that a bribe, and I wouldn't want to do that. And when possible... Okay, you got it. And when, and when you can, I would like to see increased support for the channel so that this Channel 36 can become the best community channel in the country. Thank you very much for this honor.
Lois, thank you. Thank you for all that you do. We all know, I think we could get all of us up here to speak and say the kind things about you. We do have two more.
Here we go. We'll take a group shot.
All right, Mr. Labange is going to escort Lois and her daughters with Wendy to the photo in the back. And let me recognize at this time, Councilmember Parks, for a special presentation.
I'd like to ask Pastor Simmons to come up and members of the Greater Mount Olive Baptist Today, we want to honor Pastor Simmons and the Greater Mount Olive Baptist Church, celebrating its 50th year in the city of Los Angeles. They were organized in 1954 under the name of the Twilight Baptist Church, then under the leadership of Reverend Solomon. It was first located at 51st and Compton, then it moved to Normandy and Jefferson, where their worship services were held until 1955. In '56, the church moved to 107th and Main, and where they worshiped until 1957. And then it moved again to 15600 Central, and then to 84th and Broadway until '58. Reverend Solomon moved back to his home in Texas, making Assistant Pastor OC Jones the new pastor in '62, the same year the church relocated at 95th and Hoover. In 1963, the Greater Mount Olive Baptist Church, under Reverend Jones, resigned, and the same year Reverend McClinton became the new pastor. Then the church moved its sanctuary to its current location at 659 Colden. Reverend McClinton was there as a pastor for well over 30 years. And when he decided to retire, he brought in Reverend C. Lamar Simmons for just a three -month trial, and he's been there every since. So in June of 4th, 1995, Reverend C. Lamar Simmons became the new pastor. He has set in place many things, one of which is most important, is the mission statement of the church, which is, "Get the job done." Church became, began, threatened that their facility was going to be foreclosed. He then went on a major fundraiser and retired the debt. On the second Sunday on July 1996, he held a benefit service. And then in August 96, they were able to pay the total sum in the debt as far as the church. Also, in 2001, they installed their first pool for baptism. They also, in the first ceremony, had... They also, in their first ceremony, had 16 new members of the church that were baptized. And then their building fund moved forward to put in new tile, a foyer, and hallways, and new lighting. He also, under his leadership, he, along with many of the other clergy members, refurbished the sanctuary. They completed this very recently, and we're here today to resolve that by resolution of the City Council and all elected members, on behalf of Reverend C. Lamar Simmons and the members that are here, to honor them on their 50th year in the city of Los Angeles and wish them best wishes. Pastor.
To Councilman Parks and to all of you, on behalf of the membership of Greater Mount Olive Baptist Church, we want to say how we thank you for choosing to honor us, and I am honored to be selected to lead this beautiful body of believers. And to all of the men and women that came with me today, these make up a group of people that have been a part of our ministry for over 30 years. And so today, we choose to honor them for their longevity and their commitment for being members of our church for 30 years. Again, we say thank you.
We have one other presentation today. I'd like to ask Mohamed Nazirdeen to come up and members of the Recycling Black Dollar Organization.
We're acknowledging Recycling Black Dollars because April marks Recycling Black Dollars' 8th Annual Black Business Month. And April 1996 was the beginning of the Black Business Month, and it was initially chosen as Black Business Month because it was part of the Greater Los Angeles Black Business Expo, which was traditionally in April. Recycling Black Dollars believes that Black Business Month is an important follow-up to black history and that the businesses are the lifeblood of the community. They believe that small black businesses represent the front line of opportunities for the community and provide jobs for the youth and opportunities for professionals to gain much-needed experience and confidence to eventually start their own businesses. Recycling Black Dollars states that the family-run business have proven to be the most successful and further states that when families invest together and work as a team, they are very hard to beat. Black Enterprise Magazine, Celeste King Bail Bonds, The Guard Learning Center, Crenshaw Christian Center, Word of Life Christian Bookstore, The Speed Router, the Chino Hills Ford, Broadway Federal Bank, and the Bowers Cleaners are just a few of the successful family-run businesses in the community. Recycling Black Dollars was developed to motivate and encourage black professional business persons and consumers alike to invest in the future of the black business and the communities that they support. They offered ways to develop resources for businesses, capitalization and revitalization, and they promote the consumer education and embrace issues in dealing with supporting their community. They believe in the necessity of economic strength, which will help eliminate many community problems, including unemployment, drug addiction, homelessness, and crime. Recycling Black Dollars has a unique ability to unite large and small businesses and request their participation. We're here today in honoring this organization, who has made a major role, played a major role in our community, and looking for ways to bring manufacturers, service organization, financial planners, and a variety of other businesses into the 8th District. We have seen, over the last 10 years, a flight of about 39% of the businesses out of the 8th and 9th District. So we want to highlight Mohamed Nazirdeen and his organization on behalf of the city of L.A. to acknowledge that April 2004 is the Black Business Month for the city of Los Angeles. Mohamed?
Thank you very much, Councilman Parks. To this august body, we really appreciate this honor. Since the inception of this great city, Los Angeles, in 1781, African-Americans have been a part of it and been a part of its business community. Right now, I'm very, very proud to say that Los Angeles County is home to the largest number of African-American businesses in the country. The second-place county is Cook County in Illinois, which is 5,000 businesses less than we have here in Los Angeles. Very, very proud to say that we are working diligently to strengthen our business community even more. We believe that a strong black Los Angeles will make a stronger Los Angeles. And here with me today is my assistant, Jackie B., our youth worker, Charles Anderson, and Phyllis Williams. We're very proud to have all of them as part of our team, and we thank you for this honor, and we hope that everyone will go out and make an effort to visit and support black businesses during the month of April and all year long. Thank you.
Mr. Ludlow. Mr. Ludlow also wanted to...
Thank you, Madam President. Mohamed, I just want to say thank you for all of your work. I particularly want to thank Councilmember Parks for bringing you in here today. People who have not seen your work should know that it's been one of the symbols in the African-American community for trying to promote the whole concept of self-sufficiency and economic self-sufficiency. And I'll never forget, the first time that I met you, I came to a meeting, and I had to explain where the first place was, where I had patronized, a black business that I patronized in the last month. And I said, every day for the last month, I'd eaten at the Boulevard Cafe, and we were all going to head down to the Boulevard to kind of celebrate the week that they had celebrated a big anniversary. And I just want to tell you that there are so many people that are indebted to you for your ideas, your creativity, and just real visionary leadership. And so, Councilmember Parks, thank you for bringing a real leader in, and thank you for all the work that you've done to keep this city vibrant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow, and Mr. Parks.
Madam Chair, one other introduction. Many of you remember Sam Williams, served 20 years on the Police Commission. Jackie and Phyllis are Sam Williams' sisters, so I just wanted to acknowledge them again today, nieces, I'm sorry.
Mr. Labange had one more. Mr. Labange? I believe that we had a setup for a video with Channel 36 and Lois Saffian, and if we could ask that to run.
Moments ago, we forgot to say cue it up, and we're looking over to our sound man right here, and this is the special piece put together. And Irv, do we got to go from the booth? Madam President, I apologize for this extra moment, but it's going to be well worth it, right, Lois? Right, Channel 36 out there? All right, you got that there.
My name is Lula Washington. I'm the artistic director of the Lula Washington Dance Theater, and we provide cultural enrichment art classes in dance for the community, for children from the age of two, all the way up to, I guess, 90. Last year, we had the wonderful opportunity of being selected to perform at the Ford Theater. Channel 36 actually selected us to videotape that show, and this is the first time that we had our work actually what I would call televised, and it has meant a great deal to our organization because, for the first time, people that had not seen our company live saw us on television, and they were calling us from all over the place. And I was amazed that Channel 36 went to so many different communities, and people were saying, wow, I just saw your program, and it was phenomenal, and it was wonderful. What do you do? I have kids. When I go to New York and places like that, they have cultural arts stations, and one of the things that I vividly remember is that I can see all types of cultural arts groups when I go there on television, all day, all night. And here, that's a dream, that's a vision that I hope that Los Angeles will pick up on. Many times, the cultural arts and what they have to offer go quietly unseen because they can't reach the masses, and that, to me, is the beauty of Channel 36.
Apparently, there's another segment.
Thank you for that extra time, and give Lois Saffian a big hand at Channel 36 at public television all the way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Members, there is a request from Mr. Ludlow to ask for reconsideration on item 15, which had been acted on. So if there's no objection, would we open the roll for reconsideration? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
That is now before us. Mr. Ludlow, did you want to discuss that or continue it?
Colleagues, I appreciate the opportunity to bring this back, and I don't know, it's just a little bit of a surprise, I wasn't quite ready, but I didn't know if members of the family had gotten here yet or not. But just wanted to mention that this is another, one of the very difficult cases that colleagues we've come to know all too often. On Wednesday, December 10th, at approximately 4:30 p.m., Dontre Butler was using a payphone located on the southeast corner of Washington Boulevard at Hauser when he was approached by an unknown suspect. The suspect described, as an African-American male, proceeded to shoot Mr. Butler numerous times. He was then transported to a local hospital where he expired from the injury. The people responsible for this crime continue to represent an ongoing threat to the public as they have not been apprehended, and so the Los Angeles Police Department has asked that we issue a reward in a sum of $25,000 for information that leads to the arrest or information that can help lead to the arrest of the suspect in this case. And I wanted to take this opportunity to mention that his mother Dana was going to try to come down here today to plead with us to assist in this. Again, an 18-year-old male shot down on the streets of Los Angeles should be reason for all of us to be concerned, and I did want to take a moment to acknowledge that over the last couple of months, colleagues, our effort in these reward motions have greatly assisted the L.A. Police Department. When Chief Bratton and the Police Commission were in the 10th Council District this past Tuesday night, we were able to honor about 30 officers that had been involved, detectives in particular, in the apprehension and arrest of the suspects who shot the two Ramos children. And your work and our support to get behind our officers and do whatever we can is really being appreciated by the families. And so, colleagues, just wanted to reacknowledge that there is an 18-year-old young man who lost his life, the suspect is that large, and your police department is asking for help, and so I want to obviously ask for an eye vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow, for that explanation. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this? Seeing none, the matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. We will send that forth with to the mayor. Mr. Clerk, what else is before us?
Now would be time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
All right, members, we do have a number of public comment cards. Let me begin, and I will call the names and ask people to step forward to speak and form a line behind each other. Kevin Singer from the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. Mr. Singer, please begin.
Sure. Thank you, Council. We appreciate this. Kevin Singer, the Local Government Affairs Director from the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. And today, I have our president, Larry Canizaro, and our Government Affairs Chair, Richard Ottestrom, here today with me. We wanted to take this opportunity today to come out to City Council. First of all, behind me, you see some of the members of the 27,000 members of the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. Many of these people behind me are union members. We have some police officers, we have fire department people, we have senior citizens, and we have people from all walks of life. These are your private investors who subsidize public housing through rent control. I wanted to bring them out today so you can really see who these people are and see who the people that I represent. There's 550,000 rent-controlled apartments in the city of Los Angeles. 70% of those are managed by small mom and pops like the people behind me right now. So anytime you pass any legislation here, these are the people who get the most impacted by it. Many of these small business owners have been greatly impacted over the last couple of years. They've seen increases in their workers' comp rates by 30%, liability insurance by 20% has gone up, property taxes have gone up by 10%, sewer fees up by 3%, and next month, we're going to see sanitation equipment charges go up. And we almost had an 18% DWP increase, but thanks to your good work, that didn't happen. As you can imagine, with the 3% rent increase and all those increases that I just mentioned, that we've seen increases in the business, it's very hard for these people to stay in the business. As Councilman Reyes so eloquently said, he said that if there was an 18% rent increase, that would, I mean, 18% sewer fee, I mean, water fee increase, that would translate into increases of tenants' rents, and many of those tenants can't afford that. And he's absolutely correct with non-rent-controlled properties. It would be very hard on those types of tenants. But for these people here who participate in a rent-controlled system, it would be devastating upon, and it would possibly put them out of business, and they'd lose their life savings and everything they have worked so hard to accumulate. I mean, this is the American dream that these people have worked so hard to get. But today, we're coming down here not to protest. Today, we're coming down here to thank you, City Council. We want to thank you for, one, postponing this DWP increase, for taking a closer look at it, and bringing in private auditors to make sure that it's legitimate. And secondly, we want to thank you even more for introducing a motion to have the Housing Department study the 3% rent increase, yearly rent increase, to make sure that it's still legitimate and equitable. I think when you look at all the expenses and all the increase that we have in our industry, you'll find that it's no longer equitable. So anyways, thank you very much from everybody here, and we appreciate your good work on this issue and your sensitivity to our...
Thank you, Mr. Singer. We're happy to acknowledge the people who are standing here behind you. I do have a number of other speaker cards that were submitted, and let me call now Mr. Noemi Medina, Lucia Fonseca, and Tezozomac. Would you please come forward to address the council? We are going to put a two-minute time limit on the speakers at this point.
It's still good morning here. My name is Noemi. I am representing the USC School of Social Work, a graduate program just nearby, and the purpose of us coming here today is to ask you for help in preserving the garden. Let me just tell you that the garden serves for a big purpose. It's not for personal gain, but it's for the benefit of the whole community. Over 300 families, and I say families, including men, women, and children, yes, even children work in these farms, helping their parents harvest fruits, vegetables, herbs, and what happens with these products is that these families feed themselves and even help the community who come from the low-income area purchase these fruits and vegetables. Taking it into a broader view, these farmers are inculcating great ethical values to their children and even work ethics. I mean, they work with their children, they teach them how to plant, how to love and take care of the land that they have themselves learned to embrace and nurture and care for. Once again, the project here is definitely embracing the preservation of the land, preservation of the nature, and they respect cultural diversity, and they show it by all the fruits. And I just want to ask you, come and see, and you will be overwhelmed with the love everybody here shares for their community and their harvests.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Lucia. I'm also a student from USC, and what I want to do today is... And what I want to do today is transport you to the garden. When you step into the garden, what you see is beautiful plants, herbs, bananas, all types of vegetables, from turnips to cabbage to, excuse me, to, you know, corn, sugarcane. You see all kinds of, you know, vegetables and fruits. And every morning, when you step in there, what you do is you smell, you know, all the fruits, and it gives you a sense of tranquility and peace, and it makes you start your day off good. And then you give this positive attitude to your families, you know, each morning. The families there are intergenerational. You see grandparents, mothers, fathers, you know, their children. The families are very responsible. They look after their parcels and their neighbors' parcels, and they are always willing to share their produce amongst each other, you know, give each other advice on how maybe you should do this so your, you know, your vegetables can look better or taste better. So I believe the garden, the South Farmers, to be a wonderful place to go to. And like, you know, my peer here said, I would really recommend for you guys to go see it and experience, you know, this for yourselves. So I believe this to be a wonderful, you know, I think it's wonderful that the adults are passing on their strong work ethic to the children. And then, I mean, I think it's great that they create kind of like a chain reaction where you start here, and then maybe you go on and just make it expand, because eventually this garden will help solve social ills, because it'll redirect the children to do positive things, not only for themselves, but for the whole community. Thank you.
Nomad Kanesha and Tezozomoc. My name is Tezozomoc. I have a letter for each one of the council people here on behalf of the South Central Farmers. We, the undersigned, are members of the South Central Farmers Feeding Families. The organization comprised of approximately 350 families who are growing food at the 14-acre urban farm located at 41st and Alameda Street. We're also, the plaintiffs in a current lawsuit aimed at preventing the city of Los Angeles from selling the 14-acre farm to a developer, Ralph Horowitz. Knowing that the City Council ultimately will decide the fate of the urban farm, we would like to, we would like you to consider the following factors in determining what the city should do with the land. As Robert Gottlieb, the Director of the Urban and Environmental Policy Institute at Occidental College, and James Roja, the Chair of the Latino Urban Forum noted in a recent editorial published in the Los Angeles Times, "The South Central Farm is an oasis that has breathed life into an otherwise desolate area in South Los Angeles for more than a decade." In a city known for its lack of parks, open space, particularly for low-income residents, the South Central Farm offers the City Council a prime opportunity to foster a healthier and more livable community. Already one of the largest and best-known urban farms in the country, the South Central Farm could become the cornerstone of a new community garden, open-space policy here in Los Angeles, and a model for similar efforts around the country. We would like to see the farm and other community gardens in Los Angeles become the site for farmers' markets, public festivals, hands-on education for inner-city school students. We believe the farm would offer a great educational benefit to children whose only knowledge of food and vegetables stemmed from trips to the supermarket. We would like to see a program set up through the school system to give children the experience of growing plants that provide them with food. In order to dedicate the South Central Farm for continued use as a community garden, the city will have to persuade Mr. Horowitz and his business partners to relinquish their claim to the property. We hope that the city will work with Mr. Horowitz and his partners to find alternative sites for warehouses where they can build, where they can build. We hope, too, that in spirit of civic-minded cooperation and generosity, Mr. Horowitz and his partners will step aside and allow the land to be used for the greater common good. We did not file a recent lawsuit against the city of Los Angeles and Mr. Horowitz because we are seeking compensation. We recently heard a credible report that the city plans to offer the members of the South Central Farmers Feeding Families $3,500 per family to drop their lawsuit and abandon the plots and land they are using. We do not want $3,500 or any amount of money from either the city or Mr. Horowitz. We only want that the land at the 41st and Alameda continue to be used as it has been since 1992 as an urban farm. We are not interested in relocating.
Can I ask you to conclude? Thank you. The next speakers are Gonzalo Gomez, Jesus Esparza Macias, and Maria Jesus Rodriguez. And again, there is a two-minute limit.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, City Council members. My name is Nadine Diaz. I'm the President of the Los Angeles Land Use Coalition, and I'm also a USC graduate student. I am here to officially invite all of you, LA City Council, Mayor James Hahn, to our, an event on Saturday. It's the farmers' market and the first annual Easter celebration. This event is being sponsored by Bula Dor Foundation and also the Los Angeles Land Use Coalition, and along with the South Central Farmers. It will begin at 10:00 AM and end at 5:00 PM. We will have prizes, food, bunny rabbits, toys, gifts for families, children, and seniors. And I would also like to thank Patricia Martinelli Prince, who is here from Las Vegas, Nevada, to help us in this effort to preserve urban gardens throughout California. Thank you.
That, okay, the other speakers who will be made a part of the record are Valenti Diaz, Dejanis Olivianos Rubio, and Miguel Angel Perez. So thank you all for coming. There are other cards that were submitted as well. Let me call these speakers forward. Edward Woods, Jose Aguilar, and John Makara. Would you please come forward at this time? If you are present, please come to the microphone.
Good morning, or it's almost good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to speak before the City Council. I'm Edward Woods. I'm the President of the Council on Aging for the City of Los Angeles. That is the advisory group for the Department of Aging for the city. Early this morning, from 9:00 to 10:00 o'clock, we had a rally outside City Hall on the south side, your first street side, to protest the consolidation of the Department of Aging with other entities. The other entities being the Department of Disability and three commissions, the Commission on the Status of Women, the Commission on Children, Youth, and Family, and the Commission on Human Relations. We feel that it's important for the Department of Aging to remain as an entity unto itself. The dollars that come from the Older Americans Act and the Older Californians Act is almost 90 to 95% of the budget for the department. Only 5% really comes from the general fund from the city coffers. And we feel this was the wrong department to go after, where the department is a lean, mean fighting machine, and we feel we should be standing on our own feet. We feel that this consolidation will diminish the services of the Department of Aging. With the baby boomers right behind us, the need for senior services will be even greater than it is today. We feel that those services will be diminished greatly. Consolidation will diminish the voice of seniors. Most cities with large older populations have independent Departments of Aging, as documented. Even departments throughout the country have been calling us to find out how they create a Department of Aging. We feel that it's necessary for all of you to be aware that the Department of Aging should remain as an entity unto itself. And remember, folks, that seniors vote, and don't rock the boat. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Aguilar and John Makara, if you're still there.
Hello, how you doing? My name is Jose Aguilar. I'm a constituent, Tony Villarosa's district, CD 14. I only speak, I don't speak for myself, but I will state for the record that I am a member of the Ball Heights neighborhood council, I am a member of the PAC, and I would like to, as me, myself, I would like to personally thank you for not approving the rate increase of 18%. There's a lot of businesses that are, for example, that use electricity up and down Cesar Chavez, and an 18% rate hike would be extremely detrimental to their business, and it would really hurt their profit margin. And nobody's getting an 18% increase in their salaries, in their unemployment checks, in their retirement pensions. Nobody's getting an 18% rate increase there. So I just would like to state to the City Council that elections are coming up next year, whoever votes for this 18% increase will have a placard around their neck stating, "I voted for the 18% increase." And I could tell you for a fact that the neighborhood councils are organizing against this, especially the Ball Heights neighborhood council took a vote as a statement of fact against the 18% increase, and I will support that vehemently. And I would like to state that, you know, there's a lot of people, lives that you hold in your hands, you know? They have to pay their power bill versus their grocery bill. So I want you to keep that in mind. Right now, we're going through very hard economical times. You guys are going through as much as the residents, and we just would like for us to maybe come together and maybe you could find solutions for the Department, one of our hardest to find their money elsewhere. They got great pension plans, they got great salaries, maybe they could take it out of there. But please, do not take it out of the residents. You cannot take blood out of a stone. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker, and that speaker will be followed by Librada Villanueva Porter.
My name is John Makara, and I own eight units here in Los Angeles. And one time, as I was working in an apartment, and I hear in the kitchen water rung, I went to take a look. Sure enough, the lady put a frozen package in the kitchen sink and kept the hot water running. So I said, "How come?" She said, "I wanted the frost." I said, "Can't you put that package in some pot water and then the frost?" She said, "This way is more easy and faster." Now, she pays $465 rent for that building. The water cost me something close to $500. So if they pay gas, electricity, they conserve, but they know they don't pay for the water because her daughter told me, "I don't care. I don't pay for the water, so I don't give a hoot." So I would appreciate if you can something down that let them be responsible for the water bill just as much as they are for gas, electricity. That means of those four units that I own, one unit goes for the water, and sometimes even don't reach enough. I have to put of my own pocket, pay for the water. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Makara. Ms. Porter, that'll be the final speaker.
Honorable members of the board and everybody, my greetings. I am Librada Villanueva Porter, and I am the President of the Senior Advisory Council of the Senior Single, SRO, Single Resident Occupancy Housing Corporation, and also a member of the Committee of the Department of Aging, LA City. I am very thankful, and I'm speaking for and on behalf of the members of the senior organization and on my own, that we are very happy that you are very active in helping us in carrying out the plans and projects in the nutrition program of the city and also in the transportation area and also the arts. We are having the activities in relation to the celebration of the Mother's Day at the Hollywood Bowl that is on May 6, 2004, and also the health fair at the Exposition Park in Vermont on June 12. In line with that, and with the participation, most of the seniors, I would very, very heartily implore to all of you that we give the special name of the Department of Aging, the recognition that it will not be merged with other departments, because they have, the seniors especially, have worked hard during their young years, also in connection with the celebration of all the activities here, and that they are functionally helping in the implementation of the plans, programs, and projects of our government and of the community. I therefore appeal to you that if and when given the chance, please do still have the Department of Aging, so that everything will be recognized, and we will be working towards that also, that all of us someday will also be joining the force of aging people, the old ones.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Thank you.
Also good. Thank you.
All right, that does close public hearing comment at this time. Mr. Clerk, what is remaining on the desk?
Item 11 was called special, and as much as there is a card from the public.
Let's see, I don't know that I have the speaker card in front of me. Is the person who submitted the card on item 11 still here? If not, that matter will be continued, so we will hear public comment on it as, Mr. Garcetti.
And just to clarify, we don't have a meeting a week, so I guess it'll be that following Tuesday?
April 13th.
That will be continued until April 13th? Other items remaining, Mr. Clerk?
Item 19 was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Labonge, for being a part of this motion today. I think some of you may have read about in the Los Angeles Times, and I know that all of you, as you drive by on the 101, have certainly seen the very tall green towers and netting for the golf driving range at Los Angeles City College. Today, we are building on what has transpired since the golf range went up, something that was done with decent intentions at a time when the community college needed additional revenues. It certainly is in a situation in which the district continues to need revenues, but at the same time, a precious piece of land, while we're looking for schools and parks and recreational space and housing, was given up for probably the wrong use. And now we learn that golf balls are hitting cars and people in the neighborhood, some of our classrooms at LACC. And today, we are calling on the Community College District to look at immediately and permanently closing the golf range and seeing if some better use, certainly when we look at, I know the school district looking at locations for schools, when we look at the opportunities for community recreational space that would also serve the college, we think that there are some better ways forward. I know that the community college has been very entrepreneurial, as they have to be, any public entity has to be, and we've been very supportive of that as a city. I know they're looking, for instance, at expanding the swap meet right now that is on Saturdays to Saturdays and Sundays. We think there are ways that they can make money short of these giant structures, which really have become something a little bit unbearable to see in the community. The only upshot is you can spin me around in my community with my eyes closed, and I can look around and immediately find my direction by these towering nets and poles. But this seems to be something that has not been a successful experiment. I want to thank Duke and the many people in the community who have really been tireless voices for trying to preserve public land as public land, and this was an experiment, I think, that went south, and we would like the Community College District to engage in moving towards another direction right away. I ask for your support today. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. And I only wish you were there when they applied for this, because you're a talented man and individual, and is a former professor at Occidental College, which is having a little problem today, I read for the paper. One of your students, you would not have allowed that to happen. And I rise as a, as someone who went to City College, who's someone who actually played on that field. We'd had summer workouts on that field off of Melrose Avenue that now has been converted to this horrible golf course. And I see Coach Poet here. Give him a big round of applause. A great coach from City College. We have a field named after him, and he is a great coach at Fremont High School in South Los Angeles. Willie Crawford, Bob Watson, among others, were your players. And Duke Russell is here as well, and I apologize for not recognizing your coach there, but it's good to see you all here at this time to support our efforts here. Yesterday, members, a little about 24 hours ago, I was out on Violin Avenue, and I was dedicating one new, groundbreaking, a new high school. Hey, Mr. Zine, do you know how many high schools are being built in Los Angeles now? 11. 11 new high schools. Now, we-- Now, we should really ask the trustees to repeal this contract for this driving range that never belonged on Melrose Avenue, never belonged on the campus of City College, but we should appeal to them to remove that agreement, and then also appeal to the L.A. Unified School District to build a high school there, so when you graduate from City College High School with a diploma, you can walk right into City College and get a great education that I got there, that Bernard Parks got there, that thousands of other Angelitos got at Los Angeles City College. There's no reason there should be a driving range on Melrose Avenue. Or you gotta go up another two miles to Griffith Park, and there's plenty of opportunity for driving ranges in Griffith Park. But we should call on them to remove this. This should be a facility that is an educational facility, whether it's the school district for high school or community college, it's necessary to have this done. So I call on all members to support this. We need to call on very loud and clear to the Board of Trustees, they made a mistake, they should buy out the contract and turn it back to educational needs. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge the leadership of Tom and Eric on this item. I was driving down the freeway one day, and I came into council chambers, and I asked Tom, "What is it that they're doing there that is taking away from the beauty of our city?" And Tom shared with me that he'd been fighting to not have this driving range there, and we all appreciate open space and the ability to do that. But this is something that, I think, as Eric mentioned, you can see no matter where you are on that freeway, and it takes away from the beauty of the city. And so I just wanted to stand up and support and say that I'm one of those people that believes it's also been a visual blight to this particular part of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. And members, we now have the matter as recommended by Mr. Garcetti before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Ten ayes. That is approved. Thank you. Fourth with?
With the expediency and Patrick Owens, is that correct? A former member of the Board of Trustees of the Community College District, probably served with Jerry Brown, right? Years ago, just after Jerry left and went on his way. He wanted to introduce him too. I apologize for not recognizing. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Clerk, what else is?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred?
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Villarosa requests to be excused to arrive late on Friday, April 16 for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Labange moves. Ms. Gruel seconds. Mr. Villarosa is excused.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused to leave at noon on Wednesday, April 21, and arrive at 10:45 on Friday, April 30 for city business. Both meet council policy.
Mr. Garcetti is excused on those dates.
Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused for Wednesday, May 12 for city business, meets council policy.
Mr. Padilla is excused.
That clears the desk, Madam President.
Members, are there any announcements? This is the time for announcements. All right, Mr. Labange for announcement.
Members, I said this before, but 20 years ago, we were still in the great authority, if that's the right word, of excitement of being world champions in the football world, because the Los Angeles Raiders were the world champions in 1984. This was right before the Olympic Games. Well, tomorrow at the Burbank Hilton, many old Raiders from Los Angeles will be getting together in the Silver and Black Foundation to raise money for some of the old Raiders who are not as fortunate as the players of today. Some of them, including Mike Davis, who grew up in Los Angeles, was a strong safety, number 36, who could take anybody down and cover with the best of them, has lost his hearing because of injuries over the years. Others are in other financial dire straits, and Raiders from Howie Long to Rod Martin, who also was an L.A. City College graduate. Mike Haynes and Marcus Allen will all be getting together for a fundraiser at the Burbank Hilton tomorrow of autograph show, and I just wanted to say if anyone's a fan of football, a fan of great players, and that '83 team, '84 team that won the championship, by the way, had several Los Angeles players, including Rod Martin, Otis McKitty, and Mike Davis, as well as Mike Haynes, my teammate from John Marshall High. So please attend Saturday, the very special Silver and Black Foundation autograph show, and help raise funds for needy, old, great old football players who used to romp through the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum. And additionally, there's a great bike expo tomorrow and Sunday at the Convention Center, so for those of you who like cycling, please come to Los Angeles Convention Center for the 2004 Bike Expo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Ludlow.
I'm just going to add to that, I'm surprised you didn't mention it, but to best of my knowledge, Monday is opening day at Dodger Stadium, and I want to get everybody down there to support the L.A. Dodgers. I know that Ed Reyes is going to mention that. Colleagues, we all should just join again in a big thank you to Councilmember Greg Smith. We had a great night's session, let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you.
City Council out in Granada Hills was great, and I also wanted to just mention that the tallest Chief of Staff in all of Los Angeles just had a birthday, so happy birthday, Ed Sanders, my Chief of Staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Mr. Parks.
I have two announcements. Great deal of interest in L.A. Unified School District identifying locations to build new schools, and there'll be two meetings in the South Los Angeles area on April 5, Monday at 6:00 p.m. There'll be a meeting for the site selection meeting, number two, for the South Region High School, number five, at Darcy High and the Auditorium located at 3537 Farmdale. And also on Tuesday, April 6, at 6:00 p.m., there'll also be a meeting for the Site Selection Committee, number two, regarding the new kindergarten to eighth grade South Region School that will be at the Martin Luther King Junior Elementary School Auditorium at 3989 South Hobart.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank all my colleagues who helped me announce the events in my district. I appreciate that very much. But I'd just let you know that today, we have a shuttle beginning tonight, and on opening day, we'll have a shuttle coming up from Union Station and from the Chinatown Station, the shuttle on Monday. On Friday night games also, we'll have them starting at 7:10 p.m., ending at 10:00. So come on, come on, enjoy the shuttle, get to Dodger Stadium, and let's have a great, great season.
Yes, Mr. Zine, did you want to comment on that?
If I get a ticket for Monday's game, could you get me on the shuttle?
Can't pay to play here, Dennis.
If I get, pay to play baseball, Dodger Stadium. I just wanted to invite Valley residents, the YMCA, the great YMCA, Tom Labange over on Van Owen near Wilbur, they're going to have the annual pancake breakfast, starting tomorrow morning, 9 o'clock. I'll be flipping pancakes, so everyone is welcome to come on by for the pancake breakfast at the YMCA on Van Owen, just east of Wilbur, just west of Reseda in Reseda, California. YMCA Pancake Breakfast. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Villarosa, did you have an announcement?
No.
Mr. Labange for another announcement?
Just on, Mr. Reyes, thank you very much, Ed, for your leadership on that. I know I joined with our great Chair of Transportation, Mr. Villarosa, on the effort to help the shuttles, both for the Dodgers and for the Angels. We're all Dodger blue, but we're also have the ability to catch the Angel games via the MetroLink, and we're going to be calling on better rail service for those games, both inbound to Dodger Stadium, Union Station, or outbound to Orange County and back to Los Angeles. But thank you, Chair, for your leadership on that.
Other announcements. Mr. Garcetti.
Madam President, anybody in Glassell Park, and certainly anybody in the Northeast and CD 13 are welcome to join us, but we're having another one of our Neighborhood Walks tomorrow in Glassell Park. We're going to be walking along Moss Avenue and Avenue 32, area that Mr. Reyes represented as well before, working with some of the neighbors there on some door-to-door improvements in community organizing, and we invite folks to join us. We've been having about 25 people turn out to our Neighborhood Walks. Come on out, and we'd love to see you there. Also, in Alleejen Valley at 12:30, the city's newest community garden will have its official grand opening, though we've been gardening in it for a few months now, called Rio Hardine. It's right next to the Los Angeles River in Alleejen Valley. If folks are interested in coming, please contact my office at 323-913-4693. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Are there any adjourning motions? We do have adjourning motions. Would everyone please rise? Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like us to adjourn today in the memory of Miriam Mimi West, who was such a great part of this city for so long. She was 81 years old, and she just passed away Monday. What Mimi was most known for was, of course, her tireless volunteering on behalf of the Free Clinic, the Friends of the Los Angeles Free Clinic, and over the years, she raised more than $10 million, including about $2.3 million in the late 80s for a new building. The clinic now consists of three centers on Beverly and Hollywood Boulevards and Melrose. She didn't create the clinic, but she discovered the ramshackle facility, as she says, in 1971, when she drove her husband, Bernie West, to his first long-term job writing for All in the Family at CBS. "I walked into the clinic and I never came out." She was really responsible for raising the public awareness of really free clinics and health issues, which she always campaigned on that were a right of everybody and not a privilege. I knew Mimi, as some of the other women here, as a staunch supporter and one of the founding members of the Women's Political Caucus, which was solely committed to and was very focused on making sure that they got women elected to all levels of public office. She was an earlier supporter of mine, as I'm sure, I know she was of Cindy's and Wendy's, never hesitated to write us the first check when we announced our candidacy for various offices, and really just believed in women, really championed the causes of so many people, would be, would reprimand women when we would use the terminology "you guys." Slapped us on the wrist every time we used that colloquial phrase. So we learned not to say that when we spoke of other women. So we will really miss Mimi. She was just such a strong, strong, courageous champion of not only health issues, but of women getting elected to office, so we will really miss Mimi.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Dr. Samuel McNeil Jr., Ph.D. He was born September 13, 1931, in New Orleans, Louisiana. He recently died March 24. He relocated to Los Angeles in 1955 after military service in Korea. He served as a representative of the Service Employees International Union, Local 434B. He became recognized as one of the top recruiting representatives in the nation. He worked closely with Congresswoman Maxine Waters, the late Mayor Tom Bradley, the late A. Philip Randolph, and many others. Over the last 10 years, Dr. McNeil was actively involved as a senior advisor through AARP. He's survived by his son, Samuel McNeil III, daughter Amber L. McNeil, two sisters, one nephew, four nieces, as well as several other relatives and many friends.
Thanks, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I ask today, colleagues, that we adjourn in memory of Victor Carter, who is a great philanthropist and businessman here in Los Angeles, immigrant from Russia, who came here when he was 12 years old and worked downtown at his father's hardware store. He passed away on Saturday, but he's best known for his business and philanthropic activities here in the city. In 1949, he bought a ailing lumber and building supply operation in Van Nuys, and he built it into the largest hardware store in the country at the time, and then he sold it in 1956, saying he was retiring. Of course, he did many, many other things, including founding a motion picture supply company called Republic Pictures that also did film production, and really made his impact on philanthropy. There's a great quote that was in the Times in which he said, "People would come up to him," and then the quote was, "People ask me, and it's pretty hard to say no." And I'll give you a short list, but the United Way, Japan American Society of Southern California, the Jewish Community Foundation, the Jewish Federation Council of Greater Los Angeles, the United Jewish Welfare Fund, the head of the State of Israel Bond Organization, American Friends of Tel Aviv University, and the list goes on and on. But he really made his impact so great that the United Way actually gave him their highest award in the United States, the Datokeville Prize, and locally, the Greater Los Angeles United Way created the Victor Carter Humanitarian Award. He did a lot in the City of Hope as well. He quit school at the age of 16 to work at his father's hardware store that I mentioned before, and that's where he met Adria Zucker, who was the daughter of a customer, and they married in Tijuana after a five-day courtship, and then on their 50th anniversary, got remarried at Hillcrest Country Club. So in addition to his wife of 75 years and his daughter, Carter survived by a sister, Bella Gans, three grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Let's have all members on that, yes. All members for Mimi West as well. Mr. Villarosa.
Yes, Madam President, members, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Robert Zardeneta. Robert Zardeneta was an outstanding city employee for over 31 years before his retirement in February of 2002. He passed away last Friday. Robert was known as Bob Zee by his colleagues in the city family. He was promoted through the city ranks and worked at the Personnel Department, the Community Development Department, and lastly, with the Department of Housing as a project manager for the El Sereno Neighborhood Preservation Program. Among Mr. Zardeneta's many contributions to the community is he served as a board member of the El Sereno Coordinating Council, a basketball and a softball coach for the Sports Academy of El Sereno Middle School. He's a Vietnam veteran. He'll be remembered for his kindness and devotion to community. He survived by his wife Grace and his three children, Nancy, Robert II, and Christina. He's also a grandfather to Andrea, T., and Robert II. I'd like to adjourn in his memory.
All right, Mr. Reyes, would you like to be a part of that?
Yes, I just want to add that I worked for many years with Bob Zee, and he's a tremendous public servant, and he was one of those guys that would come up to me and say, "I understand the politics here, I understand the pressures there, but what is it the community needs?" And he was really at that, he came from that place in the heart, and we truly are going to miss him.
Thank you. Any other tributes? Mr. Labange.
Members, I would just want to, before the weekend, say I think we should really collectively adjourn in memory of the tragedy that's happening now in Iraq with four civilians who were brutally taken from their cars and hung on a bridge, for the soldiers who, day and night, throughout the world, but now in Iraq are there. And I hope that as we come to Memorial Day, which will be in just a few short weeks, that we plan a special event, because it's very tragic, and I think we all were impacted this week. They just introduced the names of Michael Teague and Scott and Albersen, I believe, and Zeri Zongville, and forgive me for mispronouncing their names, of three of the slain Americans, but also the soldiers, the men and women who served this country in a conflict that we hope concludes soon for the good of the world. And I just wanted to take that moment, because I think it impacts us as we adjourn our meetings, and I just wanted to call that to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Clerk, call the roll.